Buddy, on a fine and sunshine day. Welcome to everybody. Okay, we have Dr. Ross Hammond and Rose Mary Out and Mrs. Henley will be running late, but if we can go ahead and get started.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, the first briefing will be provided by our stormwater oversight board and also our program manager Jacob's engineering. We're going to give a city council update on the flood protection program. You'll first hear from Jeffrey Waller, who is the chairman of the flood prevention oversight board, followed by Alicia Peep with Jacobs.
If you look out any window, we have an unplanned show and tell item going on outside today. I'm Jeff Waller, chairman of the flood prevention bond referendum oversight board. Flood prevention bond referendum included seven master projects with 21 projects in the 2021 bond referendum, along with 10 support projects and 10 other active projects. Resolution creating this board calls for a report every three months. I was last year in June, so this is the third month. Since the last report to city council, the board has received briefings from Mike Tiffin on the Stormwater Engineering Center on modeling stormwater on the PC Swim model. This provides the foundation for all the work that is going into this program. It shows pipe sizes, pump stations, and tide gates. Another briefing Mike gave was a program summary from day one to our two new high school students to kind of explain what's going on in the program. Jennifer Luddenrin of Media and Communications provided updates on communications and centralizing communications and posts on the website, blogs, videos, views, email newsletters, Facebook, and a fourth grade initiative going to Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And as a side note, I volunteer regularly at Bayside Elementary School, and I've already told the principal and the fourth grade teachers that when they get this quick and when they want my help, I'll be down there. The principal asked if I was an expert, and I said compared to a fourth grader, I'm pretty good. And then Jonas Allred gave a presentation on maintaining our existing storm infrastructure program. Highlights listed in the August 25, 2025 status report from Jacobs Engineering show the following are underway, and these are pretty much every month. Windsor Woods Tide Gates is getting ready to wrap up in the next two, three months. South Plaza Trail Presidential Boulevard Drainage is wrapping up. Bow Creek Stormwater Park, Sea-Tac Drainage, First Colonial Oceania Boulevard Drainage. The Eastern Shore Drainage Improvements Brick Project, this is a building resilient infrastructure communities, includes two pump stations, Cape Henry Ditch work, and elevating Lenhaven Drive, and this is being ready to go to advertisement. One highlight in the August report shows that the total program estimate has increased from 1.1 to 1.5 billion with a B dollars. And I hate to give this to Alicia, but she has more details that she'll share in just a minute. Future activities for the board include, we want to do a site visit again to Bow Creek Stormwater Park. We've been there a couple times. Next summer, we want to go back to Lake Windsor Tide Gates because the construction of some of the bigger improvements is getting ready to start. And the shore drive work will begin next year, and we want to go out and see that. So our request of city council, we had the presentation from the communication group. This is a great outreach for our community, and the board supports the expanded community outreach for the flood prevention program. So if that ever comes up, it has our support. The board will advise city council members when the topic of our monthly board meetings is in your district, so you can join us at our meetings. And I'm sure you already do this, but please remember the flood prevention program for your district meetings in your open houses, and if you'd ever like support from the board for anything, please let us know. City has been awarded $63 million in state and federal grants, and will submit soon on another $44 million in grants. We have welcomed two new student members. We had two graduate, they're off to college, hope they're doing well, and we have two new ones. We meet the board second Tuesday of every month at Town Center. Our meeting's open to the public. The board has a website accessible from ripple effect. Our email address is posted in case you want to email. And our board still remains looking forward to being a part of the flood prevention program. And with that, I'll turn it over to Alicia.
Well, good afternoon. I'm excited to be here today and give you an update on what's going on with your investment on the flood protection program. These are the two magic slides I love to show you every quarter, so it's like, watch the colors, we're going to see what moves. So we're going to have four boxes move. From second quarter, we had these four boxes that I'm going to show you that have moved to a different milestone in the third quarter. So you can see Church Point Thorough Grid, the best management practice in conveyance project, we've had to split up into two phases, Phase 1A and Phase 1B. Phase 1A has moved to the 30% design phase, Phase 1B is in the planning phase. Queensiana Pump Station, you can see it moved from a 90% design over to 100% design. And we've had, in that design build column, you'll see that dark purplish blue, that's the Windsor Woods Princess Anne Plaza, the Lakes mega bundle project, we call it. And we're getting ready to get a formal guaranteed maximum price submitted from the design build team. So they're approaching a 60% design, and so they've been very active and very busy. Right under that, Lake Bradford Chub Lake Project is also a design build project. We've awarded that, and the design has been given a notice to proceed. So it may not seem like a lot, but that's a lot of work, and that's a lot of different parts or pieces that are moving and continuing to move. The ones that aren't moving, they're still working. We're still like, if you're in 60% design, it takes some time to get to 90 to 100. So everything is still moving forward, all the projects are at some phase of planning all the way through construction. Now, I wanted to tell you, when I come and see you in December, we talk about Q4, we'll have three projects that have met a new milestone. The Phase A of the Church Point Drainage Improvements, that's going to have reached 60% design. And as Jeff mentioned, the Eastern Shore Drive, all that bundle of the brick program, that will have went through construction bidding. We've advertised now, and by December, we hope to get some bids and figure out, get that project moving forward quickly. And we should be ready for commissioning and testing of the drainage improvements at Sea-Tac. So we're continuing to make steady progress, which is great. We've spent so far through the end of August about $132 million on this program. In the last quarter, we spent just under 14. When these design build projects get to the construction phase, you're going to see those dollars ramp up significantly from a quarterly investment. This is the slide I'm here to really talk to you about today. As Jeff mentioned, the project has, the program has increased from about $1.1 billion to about $1.155. And I'm going to go over why that's changed and what's going on. But you can see from this, we've always had seven, we call them master projects, where the 21 that were in the bond referendum are grouped by, they're either hydraulically connected or it makes sense they're in the same watershed. You can see the Windsor Woods Princess Anne Plaza, the Lakes is the one, the very first row up there, it has increased the most. It's gone from a conceptual planning estimate of 504 to nearly 60% design estimate of 803 million. I'm going to talk about that in a second. Eastern Shore Drive has remained steady. Lake Bradford Chub Lake has gone from 158 million to 181 million, so just a little over $20 million increase there. Central Resort District has remained steady. And then we finished a lot of planning in the Southern Rivers watershed, and that has doubled, more than doubled the cost of that, which we're going to talk about too. So there are three main reasons that the program has increased significantly. We have more information. And having that revised scope, and I want to remind you, I'm not making an excuse for anything. The program, when you approved it in the bond referendum, was based upon conceptual projects that had not been engineered. There was no preliminary engineering, they were concepts. Engineers gave you a concept based upon similar work that they had seen in other places and said, this is what we think it's going to cost. Those were also pre-COVID dollars. So some of those estimates were from 2017. So since that time, when we have approved the dollars in 2021, we've refined the scopes of the projects. We've been out in the field for all the locations, we know what exactly has to be done. We know environmental conditions, we know roadway coordination that's needed, we know bridge elevations that have to be changed for some of these drainage improvements. We know a lot more than we knew when it was an idea, as if you were going to build a house, the same thing. You would have a lot more after you've done some due diligence of your property and all that. And we all know, I've been talking to you several months and several quarters over the last couple, several years, cost escalation continues to affect the program. Global market pricing are still continuing to increase for some of our priority commodities. I'm not, I'm going to giving that presentation this quarter, but you know, concrete, metal pipe continue to increase. Those have not stabilized, some of the others have. But we're also seeing labor cost increases. This is primarily due to shortages of staff. Contractors cannot get enough people to be committed to the full duration of their project, and so you have to pay people more to stay on board. That is particularly true in specialized fields, whether it's electrical, mechanical, and HVAC fields. Those are really hard to get good labor resources. There still remains some uncertainty. Some of the things we order, primarily the big electrical switchgear, those type of things that are going to serve the pump stations we build, we're giving our best estimates at that, but we're also uncertain about how the tariffs are going to impact those any given time where we're at right now. So those are the kind of the reasons about why those have cost, and those are really well documented, you know, nationwide. This isn't just something that's affected the city's program. This has affected nearly every large infrastructure program, building program in the country for the last five years at least. Let's talk about Windsor Woods and Princess Anne and the Lakes bundle, that big design build project. So we baseline the project at 30%, and we were waiting for 60% to get a better estimate to really figure out where we're going, because there was a lot of uncertainty at the 30%. Cost escalation is the primary reason. And if you think about it, we had a number initially from 2018 for this bundle, so pre-COVID, and now nobody escalated that for the year it was going to be built, and it's not even going to be finished completely until 2031. So escalating that alone is going to increase that significantly, maybe not as much if you had escalated initially. We didn't know what inflation was going to do to us all. I think we still don't know entirely what it's going to do to us all, even in the five year window. But other issues have affected the program too, a lot of environmental coordination. I know you guys have heard a lot about that, the different projects, with the Pleasure House Point project, with the wetland issue that affected the North London Bridge Creek Pump Station. Thalia Creek has some bank stabilization that we need to go in and do, some dredging to make sure that that bank is stabilized. We need that creek in there for the pump station to work properly. So there's a lot of preservation and mitigation of wetlands here and there, so a lot of environmental coordination that we couldn't have known the extent of it until you got out in the field and did a lot of due diligence and some field surveys. Also roadway coordination for this bundle. We had to raise South Boulevard for some drainage coordination, and then we're rerouting access to Lamplight Lane from Lenhaven Parkway. So those are things, I don't want to give you like an entire litany of reasons why costs have changed. We can provide that if that's something you're interested in, but we wanted to give you a realistic understanding of why these costs are going up as we continue moving forward. The next project I wanted to talk about was Lake Bradford. It's a very similar situation. It's primarily gone up, it's a 20 million increase, and that's primarily from a cost escalation standpoint. This project will also be finished in the 2030-2031 window, by the time it's completed 100%. And there's been a lot of environmental coordination for this one, a little bit different than the Windsor Woods bundle. This coordination is a lot, there are a lot of tidally affected wetland and waterways near Lake Bradford and Chub Lake. You can imagine that is affected by tide, so there's a lot different environmental coordination that you need to do than when you're dealing with freshwater issues. A lot of bank preservation, lake banks, beaches around those lakes, the Bradford and Chub Lakes, they need some, they need some protection from corrosion and erosion. And it's going to take a lot of excavations to get this project done. And of course, you know, we're building an outfall four miles out into the ocean, right? You know, in a hurricane affected region. So all of those things increase your risk and increase the contingency that we need to put on a project this early in the phase. And then the Southern Rivers Project, it consists of the Punggol Ferry Road Improvements and the West Neck Creek Bridge Project. This master project has doubled in size. I believe most of you are familiar with the Punggol Road Ferry. There was a public presentation that's been given a few times explaining the challenges that are primarily environmental and roadway coordination, the poor, low-lying saturated soils that have led to the need to look at different options, which were looked at. And also, whenever you have to do a NEPA study, a National Environmental Policy Act study, it adds a lot of time and cost to your project. It's a federal program you have to comply with for environmental compliance. There was some roadway coordination with the Blackwater Road and the Punggol Ferry Bridge extensions too, that the depth of that coordination was not known when this project was conceptualized. West Neck Bridge is the one that has really gone up, and that project just finished its preliminary engineering report. And this is a unique project. It's the only one in the program that uses a series of minor gates and that are administered from the bridge itself. So that type of construction is complex, and when you combine it with the similar environmental conditions and the roadway conditions that that project's coordinating with, the costs were nearly double. I would like to note that this project is in your sea level wise report that you had prepared previously by Duberry and Associates, and it's under consideration as a coastal storm risk management program with the Army Corps of Engineers. So that project is, like I said, is still in the very early planning stages, but a lot of more information is known about it today than was known back then. So the key takeaways I want you to remember, I want you to take away from this presentation. It's not necessarily the best news I have had to give you in other presentations, but the good news is that we are on track to spend the 567.5 million of bond funds within that 2032 window. We're going to spend a lot more than that, but we're going to spend the bond funds. And within the 10-year window, the highest priority projects that offer greatest value to the city are going to be completed. We're going to protect a lot of people from flooding. And all the Phase 1 flood protection projects that you identified and put into that referendum are underway, though I know some of them are going to likely extend beyond the 10-year window for a lot of reasons, permitting, coordination, roadway, funding, all those things I've talked about. This is a picture of the Windsor Woods Tide Gate installation that Jeff and the oversight board team have visited a few times, and I'm told that it performed amazingly during some of the recent weather events. So it's already making extreme value to the neighborhood. So even though we have a lot to go, we have a lot to move forward, we've only spent 132 million of the 1.5 billion, I want you to know that we're getting it done still. So just reminding you, Jeff listed those projects that are in construction. You can see on the left side, there's the Bow Creek Stormwater Park. On my right, the right side is the First Colonial Road Oceania Drainage Improvements Project. Lake Bradford dredging has been completed, and Old Forge Road and Red Lion Road Drainage Improvements have been done. So we've done a lot of work throughout different parts of the city. Clubhouse Road Drainage has been completed, South Plaza Trail Presidential Boulevard Drainage Improvements have been completed, as has Sea-Tac, it's nearing completion, and Cape Henry Canal Sewer has been relocated so that we can better effectively use the canal. So we're doing a good job of getting work done, keeping the work moving forward is, I think, the most important thing and not stopping the ball and just having gaps. But we're also communicating to the people, what's going on, what are we doing, and why are we doing it? That was one of the early mandates we got from this board, the city council, was to make sure that we have a robust outreach program. And these are a few of the slides that Jeff referenced, that the communications team came to the oversight board and gave a presentation. I'm not going to give you all of them, but there's a few good concepts I want you to recognize that we heard from you and weren't acting upon them. We have, the communications group is doing an excellent job of taking projects that are from a concept to giving a content, giving it a context, people understand what does this project mean. I've heard Southern Rivers master project, well, now I know what that means. We have webpages, we have blogs, we have video productions, graphic design, photography. You have some of the nicest public outreach materials that I've seen in any of the programs I've worked on anywhere. It's very visual, it's very attractive, you want to read it, you want to read the videos. They're also taking it from that content and tying it to a community, so it's not ambiguous. People understand exactly how it's going to benefit them in the future when we get this project finished. So that's really important. That's often a gap in programs. You get to the context of why we're doing it, but now we're getting to the community level. We're doing that through emails, we're doing that through news releases, printed material, YouTube's from social media, and it's been pretty effective. We've published 43 blogs, and there's been more than 27,000 views of those blogs, that's an average of 615 per blog. I think that's pretty a lot, because a lot of people don't always take the time. The most viewed ones were debunking the Pleasure House Point myths, Five Things to Know About Coastal Flooding Vulnerability, and the Three Types of Flooding That the City Experiences. A lot of people, you can see, took the time and read those blogs. Now, the How It Works videos are impactful. I encourage you to, I watch them every time we publish a new one. They're between three and six minutes, they're very informative, and we've had 122,000 people watch those videos. And the most popular ones are the Windsor Woods Tide Gate, because that's really cool, Bow Creek Stormwater Park, and this How Do We Size Stormwater Pipes. All of them have gotten more than 10,000 views, those videos alone. So people are actively engaging in our community outreach program. Social media, we've had 155 posts and almost 900,000 impressions. People are seeing it and clicking it and taking a quick look and see, what's that all about? And then some of the one they're most engaged about was the Pleasure House Point, and then the federal funding, the level of funding the city has been successful in getting for support this program. So my last slide here, I just want to show you, it's not a one and done. This is the webpage views that we get on the flood protection site that Jeff had up there a few minutes ago. We're consistently about 1,400 to 2,000 people clicking on that website every month. So people are still wanting to know how things are going and how things are. We post the oversight board information on there, so there's a monthly status report on the program, which you all get, and we also update the project pages as things occur and milestones are achieved. So with that, I just want to thank you. This is a picture of the Pleasure House Point as the construction that's been finished so far, so you can see it's pretty significant. So at this time, Jeff and I will take any questions you may have for us about the flood protection program.
Michael, the Bow Creek project is, that's going to be spectacular. Okay, Worth, anybody? No, Stacy.
Thank you for the presentation. Going forward, we're going to have some hard decisions to make about how to fund the difference between the 567 and the 1.5 billion. And I think it would help the narrative if we knew the difference, the cost difference between cost escalation and increased scope. So, you know, we started off at 567, we were going to do this, now we're doing that, how much did that cost us, and how much is the cost escalation? I just think that would help us explain and understand and get people to understand where we are and why we are where we are.
We can provide you that, sir.
Thank you. Oh, and the increase in scope, are we pretty confident where we are now that we've identified the total scope of the project?
Well, there are still several projects in the planning phase, but I think we have a much better number for those projects. I wouldn't say 100% total scope, but I'm going to let Mr. Hanson come up and add his two cents.
Thank you, Councilman. Good question about scope. Scope creep is something that we're aware of and that we watch for. I don't know that I would say that most of these projects have had, have experienced scope creep. Typically, when we talk about scope creep, that would be where we propose, if I used a building, for instance, and we said we were going to do 25,000 square feet, and then an additional user came in and we wanted to add another 10,000 square feet. That hasn't been the case with our flood protection projects. For the most part, what we're dealing with is an issue where our initial estimates were based upon round numbers of what somebody else had done somewhere else. So for instance, if we proposed a pump station and we estimated that pump station to be a 250 gallon per second pump station, and after the calculations were done, it needed to be a 350 gallon per second pump station to handle the drainage, I don't know that I would call that scope creep. You might, and we can certainly give you a report on that. But to answer your question, we believe that we've got the design down to the way that it is, but we have not added a bunch of new elements to the projects. I just, I want to be clear for everybody that's listening.
Just so I'm clear, is that at some point in time, we told the public, we were going to do this for 567 million dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so now we're going to do these added things for whatever reason, whether it was, we didn't know about it upfront, or we've increased the scope because it's a better way to do things. So we're not, so baseline is not where we started. If we'd have known everything that we know now, you know, that would have been a different dollar figure.
It would have been a lot closer. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I'm just saying that that would be helpful, that it's like, well, there were a lot, there were unknowns, you know, things that were added to the project. I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying that it'd be helpful to know how much of our increase in cost is that versus just the increase in materials and labor.
Yes, sir, I understand. Thank you.
Okay, Worth.
So if I could ask a follow-on question, thank you all for the presentation, of course. Jeff, thank you for your work. LJ, so the bond referendum and Mr. City Manager too, there's certain projects that are listed in the bond referendum that citizens pass. We have to do those no matter, whatever cost, if it's 567 million, or 1.1, or 1.5 million, we have, what do we have, we are bound to do legally.
So Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll speak, and then Mark will probably clean up. So the city is legally bound to spend 567.5 million dollars within that 10-year period. The 21 projects aren't a legal requirement, they're what we initially contemplated we were going to do, because as Jacob's mentioned, some of that stuff was based on planning documents and not design documents, and had a rough order magnitude of costs from 2016, 2017, and as we mentioned previously, construction causes went up about 100%. You're legally obligated to spend 567.5 million within 10 years. This has always been considered a revolving fund, right? So basically, what that means is that we'll probably do what we can within the 10 years, and then some of the additional projects may need to go into year 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. I must have said something wrong, because Dana's coming up to clean up some things, so Dana's going to clarify, but Dana, go ahead.
The 10-year requirement is for us to issue the debt. There is the ability to issue debt and to spend it down over a period of time subsequent to the issuance. So it's the issuance that's the trigger, not the spending, but they're closely related.
So basically, to clarify, we have to issue 567.5 million dollars in debt within that time period, the 10-year time period.
Josh?
Just a really quick follow-on to that, is that almost kind of like, once the debt is then paid down, and to the extent it's paid down, does it free up additional capacity then to go ahead and complete the remainder of the projects, or is that something that would be subject to citizen or council approval?
It's always subject to council's approval via appropriation, but how council structured it was, that it will continue to always create capacity for flood protection, right? So it won't be used for other general fund projects. Council lockbox that funding to be used for flood protection projects, you know, so probably whatever we're not able to do within the first 10 years and funding limitations will carry forward into additional years. And I would say 4.1 pennies grows every year as well, right? So each year, a penny increases a substantial amount, right? So that frees up and gives additional capacity. I think the last time we briefed the council in December of last year, when we typically get council overview of the city's finances, we gave you a presentation on the flood protection program as well, and I think we showed at that time, when it was around 1.1 million, we were able to kind of identify about 870 million, 900 million dollars in bonding capacity to cover the gap. Likely, there's more, more capacity available now, but it's just trying to figure out how do you do it all within a time horizon, right? But safe to say that we will meet the bond referendum requirements, it's just some of the projects may need to. the projects may need to go longer than we initially contemplated.
Okay, anyone else? Now, I'll tell you what, it's a tough dilemma, and you know, we just gotta deal with the consequences of the economy, as Patrick said, over the years, you know, 100% increase in materials, labor costs, and things of that nature. And, uh, you know, we're doing the best we can, but we are honoring the spirit and intent of the referendum, without question. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, I think that was the only presentation. Any discussion, comments, or things going on? Anybody?
Um, just wanna start off with the thanks to everybody at the retreat, when we had the discussion and the heartfelt remarks about, um, from my fellow council members concerning making a COLA adjustment to what current and future council members are, are compensated. I'd also like to thank staff for getting us the data, they're showing a large number of the localities across Commonwealth have either already adjusted or planning to do a COLA adjustment. So I would also like to say that this adjustment for the, for the TV, you know, those folks out there watching and going forward, uh, this won't go into effect until July of '27, I believe, if, if it's approved, and, uh, everybody here at council will have either been through an election or have an election within a few months, so we're really not doing this for ourselves, per se. It's bringing it up to a, a level that is commensurate with the work that is being put in, and if it had been added all along, this is where we're, where we're taking it, where I'm asking it to be taken. And the entire council could change shortly thereafter, from the time I, from what I'm saying in July of '27. Therefore, I believe it's the right time to put it forward. We have said, uh, on several occasions, when is the right time? And there's a, like I said, if there's a fable out there, I believe, that says, if you ask seven people, when is the best time for rain, somebody's gonna pick every day. You're never gonna have one day, it's gonna be all seven days. So, um, where we are today, where we are then, the other part that I would like to have in there is that if, if it has the annual 3% or COLA, whatever the COLA is, if the employees are not getting it, then obviously we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't get it either. But either way, I'm gonna talk to Mark and his team and begin to put it together, and then I would like to have, uh, everybody that, that agreed with me to help sponsor it, and we'll move it forward to public comment after I've worked with Mark on, on getting it, you know, wordsmithed correctly. Thanks.
Okay, Hutch, I appreciate what you said, and I will go along with the will of council, but I will reiterate, I will not participate with this.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Stacy?
Yes, um, this is, uh, for everybody, but maybe the city manager also. I've been in discussion with some members of the school board, mainly the chair and the chair of the, um, School Modernization Committee, and there's requests that we have a joint meeting, uh, between council and the school boards on this School Modernization Committee to discuss the going forward with the Princess Anne Plan. And, and talking with them and talking with Rosemary, who's also the liaison, October 14th seems to work for all those involved. We'd like to have, you know, staff give the same presentation to this School Modernization Committee that they gave to the school board regarding the Princess Anne, um, modernization plan.
School staff? You, they would like school staff to give that presentation?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Oh, Josh?
Is it council comments, is that correct?
Council comments.
I am having a town hall on Monday, September 22nd, at Princess Anne High School from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Somebody from the city attorney's office will be there to give a presentation on the upcoming referendum concerning the election system, so people have a chance to ask questions. Um, and then, I, I know, I saw you, Mayor, uh, this weekend at India Fest, uh, and how delightful, colorful, the cuisine, the, I mean, just, just the spirits in the room, everybody in our, the American community in Virginia Beach, I mean, just, it was wonderful. Um, and, uh, I know you were there, I'm sure some others probably stopped in, too, but that's, um, certainly one to attend.
I'll tell you what, it was packed, it was well represented by, you know, various, you know, races and just people, and it was just people having a good time appreciating their culture. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, anybody else? Hey, as, uh, we often say, Virginia Beach is a city of heroes, and this past weekend, uh, my right-hand legislative aide Monica, uh, whose husband tragically passed, a former police officer, was at the Virginia Public Safety Foundation in Richmond for the wall, and honored, uh, were there were, uh, Virginia Beach Police Master, Police Sergeant Officer David Nieves, and officers Cameron Griffin and Christopher Reese, and for the Fire Department, Catherine Matthew Chevronati, and Captain Sean Land and Master Firefighter Matthew Galena. And, uh, it was a public safety memorial was constructed to honor Virginia's public safety heroes who died serving their communities in Virginia. So, uh, major shout-out to those folks. And then along that line, this one'll make you happy, too, Hutch. We got a letter from, I got a letter from, uh, Mark Perryman from Norfolk Airport, and if it's okay, I will read it. And it said, "Dear Bobby, I wanna commend the members of the Virginia Beach Fire Department, Virginia Beach Emergency Medical Services, and Oceana Naval Air Station that participated in our full-scale exercise on September 6th, 2025. The FAA mandated triennial exercise to, is a chance to come together across jurisdictional lines to prepare for an aircraft accident. The dedication, professionalism, and cooperation displayed by your agencies was outstanding. The chance to train and demonstrate our inoperability with our mutual aid partners to help and to ensure smoother operation during an actual event. Again, I express my sincerest appreciation and thanks to your agencies and assisting our exercise, and I look forward to the opportunities that continue to demonstrate our commitment to the region." So I think that's really kinda cool. And then also another reminder, uh, this Saturday and Sunday is the Oceana Air Show, and if you haven't had the opportunity to go to this, it is fantastic. Over the weekend, over 300,000 people will be there, um, and on Friday, they, I think, I think it's fifth graders go in for, you know, a special day of STEM training and everything.
They added some other jurisdictions now, right? I think the other, couple of the other cities also.
Yeah.
Chesapeake, yeah. It's pretty cool, it's been a great part of it.
But I'll tell you what, it just shows the remarkable relationship that we have with, you know, the Navy, the military, they're part of the DNA of this city, and which really helps make us, you know, a great city going forward. Okay, at this point, uh, both of my ACE, uh, you know, agenda item folks are out, so the mayor got the duty today, okay? Okay, now, on ordinances and resolutions. On the first one, there are two speakers, but it, and it's the ordinance for the, uh, Head Ocean Hills neighborhood to the City Code Section 21, and to extend some, uh, sunset date to April 5th of the residential parking, it is store Cavalier Shores. There's two speakers that will speak only if, not speaking only, if not on consent. Is it okay for consent?
Please, if, if, okay with everyone, consent, and I've asked them not to speak unless they want to.
Okay. So it's okay to put that on consent? And there is one speaker on Jade 9. You know, Ashland Builders LLC for certificate appropriateness, historical report decision on application to modify install white fencing.
I would think you would need to hear about Mayor's proposals and appeals, and our, and recommendations, sorry, I can't speak today, has been for denial. Mark, you wanna, I think that's how we've done it in the past, we've always heard those.
I'll defer you.
Stacy?
I, I guess there's a letter here that I guess we all got, um, I'm assuming it's from...
Eddie Burnout?
Uh, well, it's from, you know, on their stationery, but it's a handwritten letter, and it says that they're willing to adjust the fencing, and I'm not sure how that flies, and I would think it would need to go back through review of the HRB before we take action on it, because they recommend a denial, and if there's some, they're willing to mitigate what they're doing, I think it needs to go back through the process before we take action on it.
Sure, do you think we should just, uh...
We should defer it until it goes back through?
That is certainly, council, council certainly can defer it back to review the revised proposal. Council could also choose to accept the revised proposal. If it chooses, it's entirely up to the discretion of the council.
You know, Stacy, I think you bring that validity that we should run it, you know, through the folks, so do you recommend it to throw?
I do.
Okay, how many days?
Ninety.
Ninety days?
Yeah, play it safe, give it time.
I'll put up the dates, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and defer. Okay, anybody object to any other thing under ordinances? Okay, moving on to planning, okay. Uh, we got two speakers on K6, we got two speakers on K7, and two, uh, two...
You only have one speaker on K6 and K7, and they are the applicants.
Okay.
They don't, they're not gonna speak if they're...
Oh, okay. Um, is any, is everybody okay with, uh, K6? And that is, uh, Charlie Hassan, CEC Family Trust, conditional use permission, sort of rental, excuse me, 213 Fort Street. Is that okay for consent? Okay, so we'll put that on consent. And we got two speakers on K7.
It's just the applicant.
Same way? Okay, and that is District 6. Go ahead and put that on consent.
Yes, please.
But, and then on, uh, K11, there are two speakers, okay? So we'll hear that. Okay, is everybody else okay with the rest of planning?
Yes.
Okay. All right, here we go, moving along. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A. Excuse me. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes: legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such a consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating, negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A, that would be Atlantic Park, and then publicly held property discussions or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or disposition of public property, held property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect a bargaining position or the negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section And we got a District 10 and a District 4. Then we got a public contract, discussion or award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussions of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussions in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body, and that would be Project Football. Security matters, discussion of reports or plans related to the security of any government facility, building, or structure on the safety of persons using such, uh, facility, building, or structure pursuant to Section 2.23711A19, and that would be election security. And personal matters, discussion, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disponing or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, employees of public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A1, and that would be, uh, you know, council appointments of boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees, and performance of council appointees. Do I have a motion?
No.
All right, roll call.
Councilor Beluche?
Aye.
Councilor Cummings?
Aye.
Councilor Huxton?
Aye.
Councilor Jackson?
Aye.
Councilor Remick?
Aye.
Councilor Decker?
Aye.
Senator Wilson?
Aye.
Senator Zero?
Okay, we're adjourned into close.